Reconvene the City Council Public Finance Authority meeting. City Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick.
Here.
Mosher.
Here.
Vandermark.
Here.
Strickland.
Here.
McKeon.
Here.
Bolton.
Here.
Burns.
Here.
All present.
City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Not for this portion of the meeting, no.
Okay. Study session members were on file item number five, economic feasibility of oil wells. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you this evening is a study session regarding the economic feasibility of oil wells owned and operated by the City of Huntington Beach. With me today is Thomas Walker. Mr. Walker is our consultant, our oil consultant that we've been working with the last couple of years on the project. Just a little background of him, he has his degree in petroleum engineering, worked with the oil industry starting in the mid-eighties until 1999 when he started his own consulting company. He is an HB resident for over 30 years, spent a lot of time here with his family. And so with that, I want to turn it over to Mr. Walker to kind of give you a presentation over our process.
Thank you very much for your time. Again, you've got three oil wells that are located just out in the parking lot. They're the Civic Center East, one, two, and three, and they go from, I guess, east to west, one, two, and three. And again, they have been around for, I think the original well was number two, don't ask me why, number two was the oldest well, but it's almost 100 years old, so they're quite old. These three wells produce oil, gas, and water. And the wells, again, are located in the Civic Center parking lot. The production moves to a fro line along Yorktown up Huntington to a tank battery located north of the site. It's a leased tank battery, which I find in my 30 years-plus of experience to be very unusual, and that lease expires next October. Again, the, located to the southeast of the site is a Springfield unit. Now, I bring that up because in a lot of oil and gas operations, you have water injection that helps support your production. The Civic Center East does not have any water injection, but the Springfield unit located southeast operated by Angus did have water injection up from 2009 through 2017. One of the benefits of water injection is it increases oil production. If you'll see this graph, there was very little oil production until the water injection started in 2009. Oil production was about 120 barrels a day, and it was on what for the oil field is a very traditional decline. In 2017, oil-water injection was ceased at the Angus site, and oil production dropped by almost 60%. Their oil production is currently about, I think it's 30 barrels a day. And what that did to the Huntington Beach oil wells, the city wells, was when the water injection was ongoing, your production was around 16 barrels a day. And shortly after they halted injection, production dropped to five and a half barrels a day. Absolutely nothing that the city did caused that. Again, it was a lack of injection support in the offset injection wells. Here's a table of oil production and revenue over the last six years, seven years. And you'll see prior to cessation of injection, the city was receiving a significant amount of revenue from the oil wells. In 17, again, water injection was halted, and you see the start of the drop, and it really showed up in 2018. Then 2020, we obviously had some issues with COVID and the collapse in oil prices, and you'll see what that did to your revenue. And in 2021, in 11 months, the total revenue was only $74,000. And here's a graphical illustration of what that meant as far as city revenue. You'll see revenue in blue, expenses in orange, and the net, which has always been a loss, in gray. And one thing to realize is, even when revenue was up, the city took the correct action of doing preventative maintenance on the Mallekeck rental tank farm and also on the wells. So, the city was being very proactive in attempting to operate as a prudent operator. When oil prices and production collapsed, the city was losing around $180,000 a year on the operation. With cessation of production, the city's still losing about $100,000, $120,000 a year. A lot of that has to do with the rental of the tank battery and also ongoing maintenance costs, even though you're not operating, you still have to be in compliance with the And I have, again, this is, I think, my fifth year to be involved with the city, and so I have performed a few economic evaluations and analysis of the lease, and it has been losing money for some time. The lack of injection at the Springfield unit, which the city has no control over, has caused production to decrease. Oil prices have fluctuated, they are currently at a low point over the last few years, the city has no control over that. And you had, you know, again, some aging infrastructure, you have a leased tank battery. And with that, the decision was made on an economic basis to halt production and minimize expenses moving forward. In looking at production and what it would take to resume operations, you've got several items that need to be done in order to resume operation. I think it's important to note that these expenses are not related to the fact that the lease was shut down, they are simply things that weren't done when we were trying to save money when we shut the lease down. The oil well, the Civic Center One, the well that's on the far east, has a routine failure. It would cost around $46,000 to put that well back on production. Well Three, the well to the west, has collapsed casing and a fish in the hole, which is an oilfield term, but you would have to spend a significant amount of money to return that well to production. That would be over $600,000. You also need to invest in new electrical controls for the three pumping units, that's a significant expense. Finally, you've got to do fencing, and there are, again, some other costs associated with assessing the pipelines, specifically and primarily the pipeline that runs underground along Yorktown North on Huntington to the tank battery. That would need to be inspected, and if that inspection found issues that would have to be repaired, that would be a cost in addition to the $748,000 that you see on the screen. One thing, whenever I look at oil wells and all infrastructure and all analysis, I always look at oil price. And I think it's very important to realize where we've been with oil price, where we are projected to be, and what it would take to break even with this operation. Huntington Beach crude oil tracks Brent-Norsee spot prices, so in blue you see the Brent-Norsee crude spot prices. The actual price received by Huntington Beach is in green, and due to quality of the oil, Huntington Beach receives a price that's a few dollars below the Brent-Norsee crude prices. And over time, over the last, again, eight years, the highest price for Brent that we've seen is $125 a barrel. If you were to invest that $748,000 with your ongoing operating expenses, you would have to realize a price of $214 a barrel to recoup your money, not to make a profit, but simply to recoup your money. In summary, there's, I think, effectively four options that you have. One is to invest that money into resumed production. The second is to make an effort to sell or otherwise dispose it as well as to another operator. And the reality is, there are very few people that would want to buy these wells when you don't have your own tank battery. They would have to provide a tank battery, find a location for it. That severely limits the number of potential buyers of the wells. The third option would be to idle the wells. Again, if you idle the wells, you would still be required to lease the tank battery and perform ongoing compliance cost. And the final option would be to plug and abandon the wells and to permanently exit the operation. And that, you know, if, to do that, you would have to plug and abandon the three wells. It would roughly cost a million and a half dollars. That does exclude any cost associated with the leased tank battery, but those effectively are the four options.
Sir, the lease battery, though, we'd only have to pay that through the rest of the, till October, right?
That is correct, but the lease terms do require us to return it in a clean condition.
And if we wanted to idle, if we were going to idle the wells, Calgen would require us to have a contract for the battery, and so you have to maintain that contract with them during the idle, because it is, it is the only process that we could process it. So, in the idle, we would actually need to renegotiate that contract with them to continue So, that, that's the summary overview. We had some other slides we put in just for background for you if you wanted those, and then we, we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding that.
So, the odds are pretty slim that we would find an operator that would even lease them for a dollar a year or something?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Calmick.
Thank you, Staff, for digging in on, on all of this. It seems to appear that, that these have served their, their purpose for the time of the oil. Oil industry in Huntington Beach, or at least the city's involvement in it, I think it, I would be of the mind to look at the abandonment procedure over the next several years, capping, and it seems to limit our liability. You know, the state law that says you can't have oil within, you know, 3,200 feet of a school, we're right across the street from the school, I think this, this is going to get more and more expensive if we keep them idle, and plus, we're paying rent on something we witnessed in these, so I think, because we're not making, I think, a decision tonight, I'd be interested in seeing Staff come back with a report on a program to abandon the three well sites and give up the lease at, up the street. I think there's going to be funding coming downhill from the state to get rid of oil wells. I know there's already the orphan well program that's coming through, but I think over, over several years, it may be cost-effective to do one a year or something like that from, and I don't know if we have reserve funds set up for oil abandonment in the city. I think, I seem to remember reading in some thousand-page document somewhere that there was an account somewhere that may have some money in it, so I'd be interested in having Staff come back with that.
Great, anything else from the members? Seeing none. Thank you so much for the presentation, really appreciate all the hard work, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, we're going to file item six, overview, ethics, code of conduct, conflict of interest, best practices. Staff, do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do. We have a consultant on Zoom, so I'm just going to be bringing him up in just one second. Hi, John, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great, one second, please. Okay, and City Manager Zelenka will be teeing this up for us.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This study session item is a follow-up to an October council member item that Councilmember Calmick brought forward to explore best practices on addressing conflict of interest, ethics, et cetera. We reached out to John Pellicero of the Markala Center for Applied Ethics at Santa Clara University to provide a, kind of a survey overview of the council as a starting point on, on applied ethics. One of the, I met Dr. Pellicero about, about two years ago, when I was with a prior city. We brought John, Dr. Pellicero, in to talk with us, and what I learned through that conversation is that we're very fortunate here to not have a built-in system as my previous jurisdiction did, and so I think this is a wonderful opportunity for all of us to learn from John, and also for you all to have access to ask him questions both tonight and after tonight, as Dr. Pellicero has made himself available for follow-up with all of you afterwards. And as you know, later on in the agenda, SB 1439 will be presented as, as another component of this. So, Dr. Pellicero?
Thank you, Al, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for inviting me to provide this overview this evening about applied ethics and codes of conduct in city governments. This opportunity is, is one that I enjoy doing, spending time with public officials and helping them increase their knowledge of ethical awareness and how to improve as, as we talk about the moral muscle that we all have the potential to exercise in regard to advancing good ethical principles in public service. I'm a political scientist, spent 40 years as a faculty member teaching political science at mainly Loyola University in Chicago, and I'm happy to be here tonight. I, I put this quote into the slides because although it was part of a report for the National Academy of Public Administration in 1999, it's still relevant today, if not more so, that American citizens, residents, constituents really expect more and more in regard to the ethical conduct and behavior of public officials and public employees, and it's important for us to keep that in mind as we go forth with the important work that you all do as elected officials in the city. Next slide, please. I just want to start with, what is ethics? And essentially refers to standards and practices that are in place. It tells us how human beings ought to act in many situations in which they find themselves as, as citizens, in your case, public officials, professionals, and so on. Ethics is also concerned with our character, and our character is formed by knowledge, skills, and habits, and oftentimes relies upon important virtues that are called into play in order to have us be ethically aware and, and behave in ethical ways. The foundational theories for ethics are based on moral philosophy, both ancient philosophers and, and more modern ones. And in effect, these form the basis or the foundation for applied ethics. So, we tend to focus in, in governments on not so much the philosophy of ethics, but actually how to apply ethics in the real-world setting. Next slide. So, what is applied ethics in government? Well, it applies to the actions, behavior, processes, and policy of governments and the public officials, like yourselves, who serve in both elected and appointed positions. The expectation is that public officials will always serve the public interest with ethical awareness, ethical behavior, and actions, and always place the public's interest ahead of any private or financial interests that they may have. A public official must not use their position, as you know, for personal gain, and has to avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest. And conflicts of interest are particularly tricky, but increasing the ethical awareness that officials have about the potential for this and the perception sometimes of what appears to be a conflict of interest is important in our ethical practices. Closely related to government ethics are various kinds of political ethics that pertain to our political processes in a democracy, including elections, campaigns, and voting. Next slide, please. So, how do governments apply ethics to the actions of a government? Well, best practices, and I use that term very broadly, we can always debate whether a, a good practice is the best one, or whether it's one we ought to lean into, or maybe it's been passed over by better practices that have come along. But these are some of the practices that are commonly in place, for example, adopting a code of ethics for the government. Obviously, Huntington Beach has this, I've looked at it, and I like its, its simplicity and clarity. Developing ethical awareness of conflicts of interest is very important, and it's something that has to be part of the training that is available, not only to public officials, but also to employees in government. Implementing annual disclosure requirements are, of course, required in many cases, especially related to things like campaign finances, but some cities, and I'll mention one here, San Jose as an example, has requirements to report illegal or unethical actions to supervisor, to somebody else within the responsible chain of command in city government, or to contact a hotline that will take down the information, oftentimes anonymously. Other practices include addressing ethical issues in campaign practices and fundraising, and I note that one of the council members has actually raised this as a, as a concern in regard to the recent extension of the Levine Act. And finally, operating government with a practical level of transparency is important. It conveys openness and a goal on the part of public officials to try to share with the public as much as they practically can when it comes to decision-making. The, there are some examples of best practices, and I'll refer to them at different times throughout the presentation, and again, these are just examples that I was able to put together in, in the last week or so. The City of Santa Clara has a fairly short, but very affirmative code of conduct with affirmative statements like "I will be," referring to public officials, ethical, responsible, or collaborative. The City of San Jose has a very concise one that emphasizes four pillars of their code of conduct: responsibility, fairness, honesty, and openness. With regard to conflicts of interest, the, the guide for all of this, the regulations really do derive from California's Fair Political Practices Act and the commission that oversees that, and I note the very extensive ways in which Huntington Beach has incorporated conflict of interest into its, its policies, particularly its contracting policies. The League of California Cities is also very helpful in, in trying to operationalize the FPPC guidelines for cities. And then when it comes to campaign ethics, and I won't spend as much time talking about that this evening in the few minutes that I have, but I note that the City of San Diego has incorporated most of what is required already, but in a very focused way, they provide webinars for public officials to keep them in compliance, and they even put out posters, short one-pagers, like the top 10 rules for candidates running for city office. Next slide, please. What I want to work up to tonight, in the next few minutes, is how a framework for ethical decision-making can be employed in the work that you do as, as members of the city government. And in the work that we do with this framework at the Markala Center for Applied Ethics, there are six lenses, or you might think about them as standards for judging the ethics of a decision. And these include the rights lens, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about rights, the justice lens, virtue, and common good in regard to the work of governments. I'll also just mention two others, the utilitarian lens is something that is oftentimes used in the public sector, and it's judging whether the actions that are being considered do the most good for the least harm. And then there's the care lens, in which we talk about whether we are paying attention to caring for our constituents, caring for our community, caring for our planet in important ways when we are making decisions. So, if we can go to the next slide, yes, thank you. The rights lens is one of the approaches that can be used in assessing actions. It, it is designed to protect and respect moral rights of those affected, and humans have a right, we believe, to be treated as ends in themselves and not merely as the means to other ends. Therefore, moral rights, including the right to make one's own choices, to be told the truth, to have a degree of privacy, and so on, are oftentimes used but can be widely debated, and they imply certain kinds of duties, like the duty to respect the rights and the dignity of others. In regard to, to governments, demonstrating awareness of the rights lens is important in government ethics, and it derives really from the values that we place in democracy on constitutional rights and civil rights. And I note that even your own code of conduct in Huntington Beach mentions a right to know as important to a civil right for your citizens. The justice lens is a second standard that can be used. Each person should be given their due, and people should be oftentimes treated as fair or as equal as possible in regard to how others are treated in a jurisdiction. Equal treatment implies that people should be treated as equals in some defensible standard by merit on the basis of need, but not necessarily always treated in exactly the same way in every respect, that would be very hard to do. Different types of justice that address what people are due in various contexts can range from social justice to distributive justice to something that is increasingly talked about in some jurisdictions, restorative justice. Democracy is founded on principles that are linked to fairness and justice for all, and so justice is another important lens to be used in the conduct of governments. Next slide. The virtue lens, I did mention briefly. Ethical actions ought to be consistent with certain ideal virtues that promote our development as humans, and these virtues are dispositions and habits that enable us to act according to our highest potential in terms of our character and on behalf of important values, integrity, truthfulness. So, I mentioned there a number of examples of important virtues that oftentimes we try to maximize in the work of governments. Virtue ethics asks of any action by government, is this action consistent with our government and our government officials acting at our best, and will this decision promote integrity and, and better trust in our government? Finally, the common good lens refers to, you know, life in a community being a good in itself, and how our actions, particularly our actions in public life, should contribute to that. Interlocking relationships of a society are the basis for ethical reasoning, and that respect, compassion for all others, especially the vulnerable, are requirements of having this kind of reasoning in place when we make decisions. It calls attention to the common conditions that are important to the public interest and the welfare of everyone, things like clean air and water, having a system of laws, good public safety, public schools, healthcare, and so forth. Governments really, in terms of these lenses, have a special obligation to act in the public interest and to demonstrate awareness of the common good in all of its decisions. So, how do we use these lenses? Well, each one of these helps to determine Well, each one of these helps to determine what standards of behavior, maybe character traits, can be considered right or good. And although we may not agree on the content of some specific lens or think it's actually appropriate to be using that particular lens in this decision, we can agree that we're going to disagree on the importance of some of these. And so that's why, in putting together a framework for ethical decision-making, we actually encourage that multiple lenses should be used when making an ethical decision, looking at it both from rights or the fairness lens or looking at it from the common good or virtue. It's important to look at more than one, oftentimes, to determine whether your actions are doing the best you can to care for the government and, and the people who live within it. Which brings me to this framework, and I, I know it's probably rather hard to read this slide, and that's why I included it in the pre-read material. But the framework for ethical decision-making grows out of how to use these different lenses. It begins with recognizing when you have an ethical issue and trying to decide, you know, is this a legal matter or is it more of an ethical matter? And it's worth noting that things can be legal and yet they can also be failing on one of the ethical lenses. Then get the facts before a decision has to be made. And when you have the facts available, then you can evaluate the actions that you may take by using the different lenses that I've already covered here and ask different questions. For example, you know, which option will produce the most good and do the least harm? Or which option treats people equally or proportionally? So you might decide in this instance, it's the justice lens we need to pay more attention to. Or maybe it, it has to do with the common good and which option will best serve the community as a whole and not just a few members. Then, obviously, you make a decision. You test it out in some ways, maybe airing it in public and asking for reactions to that from ordinary citizens or from experts. And then you act on it, implement it, and follow up with some reflection evaluation to decide whether you're attending to the best ethical practices within the community. Next slide. And this is my final slide. So the, the goals for a good code of ethics or conflict of interest policy should generally speaking reflect the core values of the community. They should promote mutual respect and trust within the government by both the elected officials and the appointed and employees of the government. It should encourage ethical awareness and ethical behavior among public officials, establish the highest standards for personal and professional conduct, and avoid creating even the appearance of unethical behavior. And sometimes we, we fail to recognize that the perception that there is something unethical happening is as bad or corrosive to trust in government or to public officials than an actual ethical problem. The City of San Jose, for example, is very explicit in noting that we have to pay attention to the perceptions as much as, as the reality. And finally, provide a process that allows you to resolve ethical issues in a respectful, non-adversarial way. And I would suggest that the process should be very much a civil one, not judicial, and not tie up the, the time of a, a board of ethics or the city council or any other part of city government in trying to work things through in a, in a more of a judicial fashion. So that's what I wanted to go over tonight. Again, as, as your city manager pointed out, it's designed to be an overview, provide some knowledge about a framework and a series of lenses that you can use in trying to make decisions. And I'll stop there and see if there are any comments or questions.
Members? Councilman?
Thank you, Professor. This is Councilmember Kalmak, the one that brought the item forward. In reviewing, I'm assuming that you reviewed our current city's ethics documents and, and kind of framework that we currently have. Are you going to be providing staff with some recommendations potentially or any updates? Because I know, I don't think we've done anything really, any work on this in 10, 20 years.
You know, we, we have discussed in the meetings that we've had by Zoom future kinds of engagements in which I could be helpful to the desires of the council and officials to make changes to the, to the code, to improve your conflict of interest policies. But I, but I do want to say just at the beginning that I think that the simplicity and the clarity of your current code of ethics captures many of the, the aspects of a good code of conduct that we would hope to see. And, you know, you emphasize the importance of respect and civility and those pillars that you have about responsibility, fairness, respect, honesty. These really are like the right touchstones to have as you are approaching your policymaking.
Thank you.
Anything else, members? Thank you, Doctor, for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Members, call for a brief recess? Okay.